Number two, approval of the consent agenda, A through E.
I guess it did, part A, number one.
Did it, didn't it?
I don't have anything special, but it is board appreciation month, so I would like to thank you all for your time and your effort. I know it's a thankless job a lot of the times, but we appreciate your commitment to our school district and our students and our staff and everybody, so thank you very much. Sorry, I don't have my...
No, I just thought that was a nice line item for us to read to ourselves and...
Well, no.
Number two, approval of the consent agenda, A through E. Bryce, you just want to go through those one at a time?
Yeah, I'll just quickly go through that if that's okay. A, the minutes for October, November, December. I know we had some discussion on those. I did check what Julie Miller said on SVA, and it is up to you all, even though you weren't all present at some of those. We were, you three were here in December, but we can vote on those to get those approved, if that's okay with you guys, because I know we are a couple backwards on that. But again, that's up to you, but we're fine to do that. B, the general fund, building fund, child nutrition fund, balances and purchase orders. For the general fund, there's just a few out of the ordinary purchases in this month. One is at the, kind of at the bottom, I'll start with that one because that's the bigger one. That's $33,219 to the Athol County Treasurer. That's our visual inspection fee that we have to pay each year. That is down, I think about $10,000 from last year.
Remind me what that, what is that, visual?
So that's part of, just when they go out and do evaluations.
Property appraisal?
Yeah, it's part of the fee there that we have to pay into the assessor's office. So that's our part of that. Like I said, that's a one-time payment. The other thing is, I'm kind of skipping around here on this, I'm sorry, but APS fire, those are inspections and repairs to our firearm system. We actually had to have those done back at the beginning of school. We found some, I'll just say some mistakes, some previous people that were here taking care of that. So that's just kind of the late build on their part, getting that out to us. So that was for $3,900, but we've since got all those issues resolved. We haven't had any more, any more problems with our firearms, especially over here, mainly here in this, in this office, in this building, so we've got those things taken care of. There really aren't any other big purchases. Most of these other things are monthly bills. All of our utilities have been staying about the same. Electricity is a little bit higher this month, but that's, that's kind of typical because we were inside, we got ball bearings and different things like that, just using the facilities a little bit more. So if there's not any other questions, that's the general fund purchases. Building fund, the only one there that's outside of the ordinary is going to be for $2,475. That's to refinish the gym floor. We did not pay for that out of building fund last year. We always had in the past, but last year, what situation?
What pages are those?
I'm sorry, it's about two pages after the general fund, and it's on the back.
Oh, I see.
Last year athletics paid for that because we had those things around, but we can, we can handle that expense like we have for now in the building fund, so took that expense away from athletics and put it back in the building fund where it needs to be. And that's something that we do yearly at Christmas, refinish the gym floor, so, and by doing that, that's why that floor has lasted almost four years, so we'll try to keep taking care of it as long as we can. Child nutrition fund, Keystone Foods Services, again, $22,560, and that's, that's about what it is each month. That's everything for the, unless there's other questions. Treasuries report, Samantha, do you have anything there that, other than we, Friday morning, we...
Yes, we're Friday morning.
Friday morning, I'm sorry.
We expect that's when Friday, the general fund.
Said, and I kind of mentioned that last month, when we look at the summary page, it can be a little, kind of take you back a little bit when you see that negative number in the general fund, but again, that's carrying the negative fund amount that we ended last fiscal year with, negative 117, and so we are in much better shape, and we will soon be getting our tax check. We haven't got that yet, so next month I'll be able to report and give a little bit more accurate kind of financial status of where everything is after we get our, our big tax checks in. Building fund, currently $57,000. Lunch fund is doing well too, at $91,000. And our sinking fund, we'll have to look at our sinking fund. I know we've got one of the tax protests from 2020 settled, and it settled quite a bit higher. So when that comes in and disperses out, that will affect that negative amount, so I'm kind of anxious to see exactly what that, what that does to that there, but we should be able to take care of that problem, I believe, before the fiscal year, stay away from that negative number. Activity fund report, Kendra was unable to be here. Nothing out of the ordinary. We've got lots of checks for officials. I think we have some trophies and things for our tournament, but no transfers or anything like that as far as the activity fund is concerned. And then on our fundraisers, I'm going too fast, I'm just stopping, but our fundraisers, we did have one request, X train is apparel, it's going to be hoodies. Well, there's all kinds of different things that they can sell, but they will stay away from the T-shirts because that's the sophomores' kind of main fundraiser, so any apparel that they sell there, it won't be T-shirts is what, is what Mrs. Matt stole next.
Any questions or concerns, A through E?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Members made a motion to approve A through E, all second. Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
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 Number three, principals reports.
We haven't had a lot happen since we were on Christmas break during this time, but we did have our Christmas program for first through fifth grade on December 16th. Mrs. Ware, Mrs. Zachary's mom, continues to volunteer her time for us on Wednesdays, and we just love that, and she does a really great job at the kiddos, and they really have a good time with their two. We started back to school, things are going well. Mrs. Chase talked about commitment. She was here on Monday, scheduled to have her baby Tuesday morning, so she, she had her baby boy, and he's healthy, so we have Ms. Haley in there doing her long-term stuff, but everything so far is going well. On Wednesday, the elementary boys and girls will both play Timberlake here at 12:30. So that's about it for the elementary right now.
Well, we had two weeks off for Christmas break, but basketball's in full swing, so we jumped right back in this week of basketball. High school teams played the Alabama tournament right before Christmas, and we just completed the Cherokee Invitational tournament this Saturday. I'd like to thank everyone who helped put it on, because it takes a ton of volunteers and a lot of work, so for everybody to help with that, any part of that, thank you very much. Tomorrow, January 11th, is the Aggie's true trophy auction. I believe they're going to eat at six, and the auction is going to start at 6:30. This Friday's homecoming, junior high games start at four, coordination at six, I believe, and high school games tip off at 6:30. And then next week is a Cherokee Strip conference tournament, usually does held at the Enid Expo. It's not this year. This year will be held at Pioneer High School in Pioneer, so 20, 21st, and 22nd, it will be at Pioneer High School. And then we don't have school on January 21st, that's a week from Friday, so, next.
Thank you. That all, principal reports, we'll cut you off.
Yeah, unless I forgot something, but it's possible.
Number four, proposed executive session to discuss the employment of certified personnel so that the board may return to an open session and vote to employ or find a reason not to employ personnel pending background checks, discussion of the appraisal, real property, and to discuss evaluation, employment, including salary and contract for Bryce Schonbacher as a superintendent, so that the board can return to open session and vote to employ or not to employ Bryce Schonbacher as superintendent, personally, 250 S 307 B1. You made a motion, all second. Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Well, hi, yes.
711. Members made a motion, does there a second? Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes.
759.
During the executive session, we discussed the employment of certified personnel, so that we, that's right, so that we could return to open session and vote to employ or find a reason to not employ personnel pending background checks, discussion of the appraisal of real property, and to discuss the evaluation, employment, including salary and contract of Bryce Schonbacher as superintendent, so that we can return to open session and vote to employ or not to employ Bryce Schonbacher as superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number five, vote to approve the employment, including salary and contract of Bryce Schonbacher as superintendent of Cherokee Public Schools.
We made a motion to approve the continued employment, including salary and contract of Bryce Schonbacher as superintendent of Cherokee Public Schools.
Does there a second? Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Well, hi, yes.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the exempt food fundraiser policy required by child nutrition.
I have some in my pocket, it's, it's a pretty short policy, but it's one that we have to have. Basically, this would allow an organization during the day, for example, SCCLA sometimes sells cupcakes during the day, but we did have a policy that allowed them to do that, and so we're just making sure that we're in accordance with all those child nutrition guidelines, and this policy would allow us to do that. Those, we didn't change anything as far as their fundraising, we still go through our normal fundraising process, they'll come to me, I'll present them to you, and we will get those approved.
Any questions on child nutrition, food fundraiser policy?
We've made a motion to approve.
Members made a motion to approve, all second. Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Well, hi, yes.
Number seven, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the equal opportunity education scholarship tax credit policy.
This policy was sent out to us about six weeks ago, and so reviewing this, and it's kind of a lengthy policy, so I'll try to summarize as best I can and answer the questions that we might have. But I'm going to read the first statement on this policy for everyone. It's, "For the purposes of the Oklahoma Equal Opportunity Education Scholarship Act, Cherokee Public Schools will establish policy regarding donations named to the school district, or any school foundation authorized to accept tax credit donations as established below, which may be eligible for a tax credit." So what this policy does, and what this new legislation that was passed that would allow schools to adopt these policies, this opens up a door for us to accept donations, and those individuals or businesses that would donate to our school, through a little bit of paperwork, not a lot, but those would qualify now as a tax credit, rather than just, you know, a donation that we can normally, we can provide that documentation, and people can use that as tax deductions, but this would actually be a tax credit, and they can receive up to 50% credit of the total amount of contributions made in a single tax year. It would be for $1,000 for single individuals, $2,000 for married, and up to $100,000 for legal businesses. If you make commitments, as any of those that I just mentioned, for more than one year, if you make a commitment for the, to make the same contribution for the next, then you would be eligible for up to 75% of that amount to qualify as a tax credit. Now, it is, there are limits in the state in the amount of credit. The statewide cap has a limit of 25 million, and a district-wide cap of 200,000 annually. So there is process that, a process that we have to go through, and we have to determine where we're at by certain dates, and we would have to notify any individuals that may want to contribute. The state will notify us to, to tell us that for some reason that they've reached that cap, and there wouldn't be any more credits available for that year. So this is new, but, you know, we have our Cherokee Education Foundation. I've reached out to them, and I think we can discuss a little bit more with them at a later date, if they want to go through a similar process that would allow people to donate to them in kind of, you know, connection with us, and they can fall underneath that umbrella. But, you know, if we have initiatives, projects, things like that, that we want to do, and we want to really go after some targeted assistance with some donations, that tax credit is going to carry a lot more weight, rather than just a donation. So this could really help out some people, it can help out the school, I can see this being definitely mutually beneficial for everyone involved. And so, like I said, brand new kind of way of doing this, and if we adopt this policy, then it would allow us to start that process, and we would start that for this tax year.
So this was the setup for private schools, and now they're just making it to where public schools can receive the same benefits of private.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it was a place for private schools, and now public schools can get the same, or public schools donors can get the same benefits.
Any questions on the tax credit policy? Good stuff. Make a motion to approve, do I have a second?
All second.
Does there a second? Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Well, hi, yes.
Discussion, number eight, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the 22-23 school year calendar. Already?
Already, yeah, and it seems really early, but as we start planning things right now in the spring and looking forward, this is the first thing we kind of really have to have in place, so. Calendar that you have in your packet is what myself, and Mrs. Patterson, and Mr. Pruitt, along with some input of some other teachers, this is, and it's very similar to what we have this year, except we pushed the start date up a week, so we have a few more days built in, but right now we have to have 165 instructional days, even with the 1080 method that, that we'll talk about on the next item, but we need to do the calendar as its own separate approval item. But the calendar and the days off, the breaks, are basically what we have now, they're just going to start a week earlier. Labor Day, October, fall break, three days there for that, a full week at Thanksgiving, two weeks for Christmas, then our normal in-service day in January, and then February 20th, I believe that would be President's Day there. This, with this calendar and these amount of days, and then when we talk about our hours a little bit, but if we, if we do approve that, again, we would have lots of flexibility with this, so snow days, different things like that, we don't have to worry about it. But we've, we've added a few more days, it's not a lot, but we've added more days, instructional days with this calendar, but I don't think that it's going to be in a way that everybody's going to feel like we've, we've added an extra, you know, just insane amount of days back to our calendar. Any questions?
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Does there a minute motion, Amber, a second?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Well, hi, yes.
Number nine, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the 1080 method for the 22-23 school year calendar.
Last year we didn't do this at the same time, but that was just, we do this now. This would, we'd have to turn this into the State Department, along with a letter to state that we are going to use the 1080 method, and that means 1,080 hours. We would have, total days would be 169 school days, 167 of those would be instructional days, with two parent teacher home days, and five professional development days. Like I said, using that calendar with the minutes, hours, calculation sheet, it would give us a start time of 8:05 with an end time of 3:20, and that, that gives us more than enough hours, that actually puts us at 1,197 total hours, and 1080 is the minimum required there, so those extra hours then are, are those the snow days and things like that. But this gives us a few more days built back in. It lengthens the day just a little bit, but not a lot, and, you know, we, last year, year and a half, we, we missed out on several days, so rather than just taking huge chunks of of days, if we can just get a little back here and there within our day, we're trying to get back on an eight-hour day with high school schedule, and, you know, just trying to get back a little bit of instructional time for the term.
Any questions on the 1080 method?
Question.
All second. Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Well, hi, yes.
Number 10, discussion and vote to allow the superintendent to post the notice of a sale and solicitation of sealed bid for real property previously surplus by the school district.
So the property here across the street, 515 South Massachusetts, we did declare that a surplus, we have had that appraised, and so the next step would be for me to post the notice that we're going to take sealed bids for that property, and we'll get those posted in the news grant and the newspaper, and start the, the next, the next step.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Amber, second. Samantha?
Welcome.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Well, hi, yes.
Number 11, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the changes to the handbook regarding semester test exemptions.
I have a draw, Mr. Pruitt, kind of take the lead on this, he has to deal with a lot of those issues.
Well, as you know, the first year when we made changes to the handbook, our old semester test policy had been there forever, according to Mr. Littlefield, was you can miss three absences if you have an A, you can have two absences if you have C, you can miss, have one absence if you have, or a B, one absence if you have C, and so at the beginning of the year, we changed that to you have three absences, or a C or above, you could be exempt from a semester test. Last semester, I got a lot of, well, I don't want to have to take a semester test, so I might, you know, is this going to count against me? Is this going to count against me? Is this going to count? Well, it's not really counting against you, it's just trying to, you know, reward, I guess, some, a reward or incentive to make sure that you are in school, because state law says you have to be here 90% of the time, which equates to, you can miss about nine days, nine or 10 days. And then, as we know, right after Christmas, flu's kicked off, but, you know, if the kid gets the flu, they may miss four days, but if they have COVID, and they have to, they have to miss at least five days, and one, the state says doesn't count against, one does. And so with everything that's going on, I, I want parents to keep their kids home if they don't feel good, and not worry about semester tests, and that's why I've got a lot of phone calls. I mean, Kendra gets asked about all, is this going to count against them? Is this going to count against them? And so I think the best thing, I mean, I've thought several methods, but I think the best thing right now is just to suspend semester test exemptions, so that way people aren't worried. Where they, I mean, everybody's going to take them, if your kid's sick, keep them home, and then we don't have to worry about if they miss three days, or if they miss four days, or, I missed two, two days in this class, but four days in this class, so I'm not, so...
So regardless on grade, all kids will...
Yeah, we're just going to do, do away with the exemptions for this semester. We've talked about raising the limit, but how far do you raise the limit when the state says nine? It's unfortunate, because some, a lot of people see that as, as a punishment to have to take a semester test, when it's really not. You know, it's a half a day on one day in the morning of another day, so we're still going to get out of school at the same time. I just, I think it's more important to keep health in mind, rather than a semester test five months away in mind.
You're spreading the heat, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm going to take a lot of heat, I'm sure, but, you know, I, I didn't think changing the first, this year was a big deal, but everybody saw that, and then, I heard a lot of that last semester, I'm like, I explained it several times last semester, that the semester test exemption policy is just an incentive, kind of, so, because the state law says you can only miss this many days, and we're trying to keep them in more than that, but, you know, I...
It's like they're kind of trying to hold the COVID in one area.
And so, you know, I know we've had the flu, right? They said stay home four days or five days, and, well, that's, but COVID now with their, the new quarantine guidelines, five days, at, at minimum of five days, could be 10 days, but, so where do you stop that and make it fair for everyone? And plus all, is this going to count against me? Is this going to count against me? Am I going to have to take them? Is this going? Let's not worry about that right now. There's bigger things, bigger fish to fry, bigger problems in the world than the semester test that, you know, every, every kid should be okay with taking a test at the end of the semester, so I think it's just best that we suspend it for now, and do away with the exemptions, and revisit it next year.
So that's something you plan on revisiting, if things kind of go back to somewhat normal?
Next year. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think we can do it this, this year, I think whatever we do next, since we're a weekend of school, and we've already had kids miss, and we want to make sure that the parents keep their students home, if they don't feel good, and not worry about a semester, being exempt from a semester test in five months. So I think if we just do wait with it now, and say, everybody's going to take a semester test, we're going to do away with the exemptions, keep the kids home if they don't feel well, and then this summer, we'll, we'll see where we're at, and revisit it for next year's handbook, and we can always put it back in next year, but I think for this year, that would just be best, I think. That way, we're not, parents aren't worried about their students saying, oh, I have to go to school, because if not, I'm going to have to take a semester test.
I don't disagree, my only question is, is why, why implement it now for next year, not wait till May?
No, oh, no, I'm saying this semester, I'm going to implement this, I'm going to suspend it now, for this year, for this year, and at the end of this year, when you see where we're at, if we want to implement it for next year, next school year, but this is for right now.
Okay, I'm waiting.
Right now, yeah, and we've talked about, you know, waiting, but I think if we're going to do something, since we're only a weekend of school this semester, now's the time to do it, so everybody knows that, that's the, I mean, don't you agree, Mr. Schonbacher?
Yeah, I agree completely, and, you know, unfortunately, we've got several that they do, they look at it as a punitive thing, that they have to take a semester test, and it's been my experience as a parent, too, that when you have a student that kind of maybe, you know, right there borderline, a lot of times that test will be the thing that pushes them. will be the thing that pushes them up there. And it may just be the, you know, that little bit of motivation. A couple of years ago, everybody took the test. It was fine, but right now, exactly what he's saying is unfortunately, it's kind of having this adverse effect on our attendance, where the kids may not be feeling real well, but they're here because they're worried about a test in May. And, you know, that, that doesn't need to be the case, and we feel like the best way to do that is, okay, well, we're just, this semester, we'll all take the test, and then we'll reevaluate it.
Any other questions?
Does anybody have any other questions?
I appreciate it.
Make a motion to approve changes.
Members made a motion. Desiree second. Samantha?
Littleville.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Littlehigh, yes.
Number 12, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the time change for the regular school board meeting schedule for 2022.
It was brought up that we might consider a time change, and so if we can do that, there's an easy process here that I would like to have it approved. So this would be just asking that we vote or discuss to talk about changing all of our regularly scheduled meetings. The only thing that we would be changing is the time from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the remaining regular meetings in 2022. Meeting place and dates would not change. If we vote to approve that, if we can fill this out, we can take it to the county offices and get it posted that way. So if everybody, everyone prepares with that time change.
I'm okay with it. I got a little concerns over the summertime, but do our best to make it work. It's pretty early in the day, or it's going to get dark till.
And that's, that's for discussion. We can, it's my understanding if we needed to, if you wanted to move those for some reason to a later start or leave those to 7:00 p.m., we can make those adjustments. We just got to go through this, approve it, and turn it out at the courthouse.
We can try, I suppose. You guys have any thoughts or questions?
If something needed to change, I think we can, we can change that meeting if we needed to at that time. We just have to do it at least 10 days out. So we just need to remember as those come out. So if we want to do a blanket change and cover all of them, but then if that comes up, like I said, in the summertime, we can do that. We just need to make sure that maybe we talk them out at the, you know, maybe the meeting before, that we plan to do that that next month.
It's not been around for years. Wow, Six Parkers. It's home by Six Parkers. All right, okay, well, you guys, any discussion questions? Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve any time change.
All right, and Desiree, Amber?
Littleville.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Littlehigh, yes.
Thirteen, superintendent's report?
I don't have a whole lot, just, you know, getting back from break. And we have a lot of, we've got a lot of sickness and a lot of illness right now. We're trying to manage that the best we can here. You know, we did have a lot of kids out of school today. We had some last week that were out. It seemed like the high school was hit a little bit harder last week. And now it's all middle school kids. But, you know, we do still have a lot of, a lot of students in school. And so, you know, I think we've kind of said from the start, we want to be as committed as we can to staying in person. We know that that's how students learn and are served best. But one problem we're running into now is we're running out of substitutes. We've got some teachers that need to stay home, whether it be with their kids or just because of their own, you know, illnesses. And so we're running short on substitutes. And so, you know, just as of today, we have a kindergarten class. We don't have anybody available that can come in, and so they're going to have to be gone for the rest of this week. And I think that that's just maybe where we're at right now. I know there's a lot of other districts, even saw some not too far from here today that are going virtual for the rest of this week. So, you know, this sickness, whether it be flu, whether it be COVID, it's a mixture of both, but it's, it's everywhere. We've stepped up our sanitation efforts. We had a little bit before break even. We're doing that more now. Asking the teachers to wipe down the desk in between classes as much as possible, all the high-touch areas, spraying disinfectant down, keeping those things clean, trying to keep kids spread out as much as we can during the day. All of those things that we've been doing, but, you know, it's, it's not ever just going to be 100%. And so, like I said, we're doing the best we can to keep from here as much as possible, but honestly, right now, it's, if it's going to be like close to today, it's almost an hour-to-hour evaluation of our situation to see how many kids will have. We had several today, but there's not to say that half those kids might not be back tomorrow. We just don't know, so I think it's a little early. You know, we've been keeping an eye on a threshold count, and we've kind of used it all along, and we used it some even last year to, you know, kind of keep 33% of your, your building population as far as your students go. You know, if you get close to that 33%, it's absent, it's probably time to do, to do something major. And right now, we're, we're around 20% is where we were today. So we're still a ways from that. That's a lot of kids that have to be all in up to that 33%. But instead, I, right now, I'm really just more concerned about our teachers and the availability of having somebody there to be in that classroom with them. So we'll keep a close eye on it, kind of start first thing in the morning and just, as parents, check in. But, you know, like we just discussed with the, with the handbook changes, we've asked parents all year, you know, if your kid's not feeling well, keep them at home. And that's what, you know, I think that's what kids are doing, or people are doing, and parents are doing. And so it's going to take all of us kind of joining together, trying to figure it out. Hopefully, this is just a, in the road after Christmas break, and everybody coming back, and we can get through that part. And then we'll get everybody back and get healthy and, and keep going like we've been going. I will share more financial information at next week's meeting. As I mentioned, waiting on county checks to come in so that I can get some more accurate numbers. But at this point, things are looking much better. And it's, it's a lot different mood right now at this point than it was a year ago. So I think we're going in the right direction. And other than that, I really don't have a whole lot, I'm not going to miss anything. So I talked about our tournament, and that went well. That's it.
Number 14, any new business?
There's one more business.
15, I make a motion to adjourn or second? Desiree second. Samantha?
Littleville.
Yes.
Gibson, yes. Littlehigh, yes.
826.